Okay, we're gonna go and get started. Call the Castle Hills Special City Council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Actually, we have Mr. Pinkston here. Would you mind leading us in invocation?
Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you for bringing us to this meeting tonight. So much has gone on in this room, Lord, over the years and so many people's lives, just the time, the sacrifice, the volunteerism, the heart of it all. We thank you for this city, our Lord and a nation that's struggling in terms of just division and pressures and just tearing at the fabric. I just thank you for the peace that we enjoy in our community. A lot of that comes from the leadership and down from there. And I just pray for these leaders, that you would guide them, give them wisdom beyond their themselves and just courage to do the hard things and the right thing. And then, God, I just pray for your provision and good to come through their leadership and return the blessing to them manyfold over, both the council and the city staff. Just again, we're grateful to be in Castle Hills. We commit this meeting to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Mr. Clamp, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
Perfect. See if we have any citizen comments. Okay, we'll proceed on to item number one. Public hearing to consider the proposed replat will establish Castle Hills addition being a total of 2.51 acres, establishing lots one through four out of Lot Three, Block One, Castle Hills, as recorded in volume 980, page 393, in the deed and plat records of Bear County, Texas. It is 6:32, we're going to open the public hearing. Okay, if we don't have anybody, we're gonna close the public hearing at 6:33. Proceed to item number two. Discussion and possible action on a replat will establish Castle Hills addition being a total of 2.51 acres, establishing lots one through four out of Lot Three, Block One, Castle Hills, as recorded in volume 980, page 393, in the deed and plat records of Bear County, Texas. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Pinkston is here, the applicant on this replat, and I understand he has a presentation, which you have a copy in front of you there on your dice.
Mr. Pinkston, all yours.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Michael Pinkston, the Christian School at Castle Hills, 2216 Northwest Military Highway. We're here tonight with you to present a replat proposal for the 6909 West Avenue property which sits behind, immediately behind the CDS and faces Danny Lane and Annie Loek. Our engineer from MNS Engineering is online viewing the presentation and available by phone if she is needed this evening. A little background quickly. In January 2016, the school separated from Castle Hills Church. We became an independent, private Christian school. As a part of that process, we began to pursue property there and pursuit of what now is the larger part of the church's property is now in our ownership. And the process began back then. We have been before you and the zoning committee and a number of times. We have two SUPs and some other times that we've been here. In 2017, 2018 consecutively, two SUPs were approved unanimously by the city council to get all this lined up to where we are tonight. And then again, last year, a replat for the church and school boundaries was similarly approved. In all these proposals before the city council, we've presented our desire and plan to sell a number of these properties as single-family residential. It's a win-win-win. It's a win for us because it helps me financially accomplish the great goal of purchasing the historic home of the school. The second thing that it does is it has the blessing of our neighbors. Some of these properties have been tension points in past years, prior to most of us, prior to me for sure. And so it's a win for the neighbors and I think it's a win for the city because it provides additional tax revenue, which everybody has been interested in since we've started making this presentation and working with you to develop this plan. All along the way, we've had the blessing of those neighbors and that's been a great part of just helping establish and build bridges in our community, including with many of you. So I had sent a PowerPoint. Is it? You may, did you just print copies of it? That's great. Then the second page in your packet says the West Castle Lane replat. Just to quickly review, everything that you see outlined in dark blue on that piece that looks like this, it says West Castle Lane on it right here. Everything outlined in blue is currently the properties owned by the Christian School at Castle Hills. This page was from the, several months ago, earlier this summer when you approved the replat of that, it's in gold or shaded in gold, West Castle Lane property at the top of this diagram. So the first piece was the piece on Winston Lane. You see the larger darkly shaded that butts up to the Boy Scouts property there between Winston Lane and the Boy Scout property. Then there was the piece that was approved earlier in the summer of the West Castle Lane. And then we have moved, this was the original plan presented in the SUP, the zoning commission and to city council in the, what we call SUP number two. And it now divides properties that the school will hold where it says SUP number two on the left side, closest to that Danny Lane West Avenue. And you see the two lots that we are looking to put onto the market facing Danny Lane there, adjacent to West Avenue, behind the CDS. Now, this evening, we present the last piece of this plan. You previously have helped us put together a replat of the Danny Lane West Avenue property. I am looking right now at the diagram on the next page, and then you'll find behind that, the engineer's drawing of that. It's actually divided into four lots. In case we ever want to sell, there's an existing house and adjacent properties that are storage and greenhouse for the science department and maintenance and other things over there. But, so it's set up where we can sell two properties now. And then the third property away from the West Avenue, if you're moving from West Avenue, the two that you see in the diagram, a third property that you see on the engineer's diagram that we could put on the market, we'd like to keep it if possible and wouldn't sell it unless it was just a financial necessity. And then the part that's immediately behind what you see as our main building on campus, the Victory Building, immediately behind the Victory Building, we will maintain that. It's a part of the grounds of the school at this point. So a few closing comments. You'll remember when we started, we toured the neighborhood, Danny Lane. We've done this all across the community, inviting people onto the campus to get their input to the plan. We had received their approval before going into the SUPs. All of the city engineers' comments have been addressed. No usage changes. The lots, topography and drainage will remain the same as no new construction is currently scheduled or permitted. The new lots will fall into the residential large lot classification that it currently is already considered. The Bear County has exempted these lots from the septic system requirements in lieu of the mandatory connection to city lines. You'll note that the lot size is in excess of a half acre, which meets their expectations. The existing elevations and locations of the sewer lines were prohibitive in terms of connecting to city sewer, and the immediate neighborhood is exempted for septic as well. Finally, SAWS has concurred with the county on everything in its purview or jurisdiction. In closing, I think I said in closing twice now. In closing, we believe that this plan is a win-win-win, as we discussed. So we respectfully ask you to consider the replat proposal presented to the council tonight for consideration and hopefully approval. And I know that you might have some questions or thoughts, and if you do, I'm here to serve you best I can. And anything I couldn't answer, maybe that engineer, we could call and see if we could get help there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston, and thank you for going through the process and always being such a good neighbor to us here at Castle Hills.
Yes, my honor. It's a great relationship.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, the council approved, the replat establishing Castle Hills addition being a total of 2.51 acres, establishing lots one through four out of Lot Three, Block One, Castle Hills, as recorded in volume 980, page 93, in the deed and plat records of Bear County, Texas.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Discussion? Mr. Gregory?
I'd like to ask our city attorney, when these pieces of property move into private hands again, the single-family residents, they are still going to be required to hook up to the sanitary sewer system, are they not?
Mr. Gregory, that certainly is my understanding. As Mr. Pinkston just said, that the city requires the property to be hooked up to the sewer system.
Will they also be subject to the, let me get it here, the storm order management fee? When they, whoever builds on this property, they'll have to pay a storm order management fee?
Again, if that's, Mr. Gregory, again, if that's required by our ordinances, they will. That's really a question really more for staff as to, you know, how that will be handled.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much, Mr. Pinkston.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your help and support.
Okay, proceeding on to item number three. Conduct public hearing on the proposed Castle Hills PACE program. It is 6:44, we're going to open the public hearing.
Pat Bernacki, Ensemble Senior Living, 6701 Blanco. Just real quick, I know that the council's been educated on the PACE program previously by Mr. Clamp. And just from the private owner investor perspective, as I think the council knows what we've done with the Ensemble building, we did a tremendous amount of MEP work. Should this get adopted, we'll be able to retroactively go back and apply for PACE funding. In addition to that, because it allows us, and I'll spare you from the weeds of our capital structure, it essentially allows us cheaper capitals. Because of that, it'll allow us to do even more energy efficiency things, which ultimately trickles all the way down to our residents. So our rents will remain extremely competitive and potentially lower because of what PACE allows us to do. And I think in general, the benefit to the city with limited costs, no real, as I understand it, no real oversight or overhead because of ACOG, it seems to me that's a huge advantage as well for other future developments in the city. And really forcing kind of investors, developers to put their dollars in the right place, which should be energy efficiency certainly in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernacki. Do we have anybody else? Okay, it's 6:46, we're gonna close the public hearing and proceed to item number four. Discussion and possible action on resolution number 2020-09-23, establishing the City of Castle Hills PACE program. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. This is for establishing last council meeting, you did a resolution of intent. This is the resolution to establish. Mr. Clamp is here in regards to any questions you might have on this process moving forward. Mr. Clamp, do you have anything? Presentation? Nope?
Okay.
This would establish the PACE program. And then the next piece would be to do the ILA and interlocal with ACOG to work with them on how they manage the PACE program.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, counsel. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council approve resolution number 2020-09-23, as stated.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Discussion? Mr. Gregory?
Just want to make one observation. Upon reflection upon the last meeting, if Mr. Paul voted no, I voted aye. On reflection, I believe Mr. Paul is correct. So moving forward, I think I'm probably going to be voting no.
Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Joyce?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Rapley, if I may. It turns out, I'm reading through this, that if there's a delinquency on one of these loans, the City of Castle Hills is the one that has to assess the lien. And so that would suggest to me that we probably need to keep records of all of these loans in order to know what to do in the event that there's a default.
I would agree. I mean, we would have to work with ACOG. Again, I think that's why we would do the, doing the interlocal agreement, we would have record for anything that needed to happen, like a lien.
Right. So the question then to you, Mr. Rapley, is are you comfortable that the additional work that will be put on you and your staff, I don't think we're gonna be reimbursed for this unless there's a, unless there's a suit?
I don't see any issue with it. I mean, it's probably like any course of action, where we place a lien on a property here, it would be a certain process, but I don't think it would be something that would be too much for staff to handle, and/or myself.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Comments?
I have a question.
Mr. Paul?
Yes. Well, you know where I stand, and I've discussed it before, why? I don't have anything against these people per se, except for, again, with all the writing and you see all the ABCs that they put on the city or imply that the city needs to help with, I don't understand why. We don't have to help if Frost comes in and does exactly the same thing with clients. So it seems to me, I'm not against a program if they want to loan money to somebody, but like, for example, it does say the taxing district puts the assessment or the lien on there. Are we the taxing district or is Bear County appraisal the taxing district? So who really does that? And when you read through the summaries of all these different things, and it's, it just, I don't know why we have so much verbiage since in something that we don't really have anything to do with, then why are we going through this process every time there's a loan? Why are we gonna keep track of the liens? Why are we gonna do all that? And to me, it's just, again, I'd like to know, has Bear County approved this for their jurisdiction?
I would direct the question to Mr. Clamp, if you could.
Okay.
So Bear County would be the entity that we work with on any filing of paperwork on the PACE program itself. So the City of Castle Hills would not be responsible for any of that. ACOG would keep track of any program loans. And if there's an issue with that, we work with the City of Castle Hills attorneys that actually collect, pass through property tax bills. So once a loan becomes deficient, it becomes like a property tax bill and there's collection and the fees are paid for by the statute that allows for penalties and interest. So once Castle Hills passes the program, the work goes to ACOG to meet with the client, do introductory analysis on whether that project will qualify for PACE and do all the underwriting and financial backing as well. So Castle Hills really doesn't play a role in terms of processing the loans. The only role Castle Hills will have is if Ryan or somebody on city staff gets a phone call and they direct them to me. But we will also have a Castle Hills link on our website to direct people there as well. So there's very little work on the city's part. To answer your question about, has Bear County passed it? They have not passed it yet. Only the City of San Antonio has. And there's some other counties that have in other cities throughout our region, but not Bear County.
Okay. Mr. Paul?
No, I don't have any more questions, unfortunately. I just don't, again, not comfortable with doing this because we have banks within our own city limits, and it just seems to me like we're kind of saying that we really like this program and we approve this program and what do our, does the banks, do the banks in the area think? I don't know. It just, it just doesn't seem to me to be something we need to be tied to. That's just my opinion.
You make a good point, council member. Remember, this is a very market-driven program. So all the local banks within Castle Hills in this area will participate in this program if they so choose. Private engineers, private contractors, all that is market-driven. So really, ACOG is to serve as the administrator of the program because it's statutorily codified within the statute of the state of Texas. So that's our role and we will monitor it in terms of efficiency and effectiveness for the state of Texas.
Well, why can't you just do that without, without the jurisdiction, without Castle Hills saying, hey, it's okay, go ahead and do it? Why can't you just go ahead and do it with the client, just like Frost Bank does?
The statute requires that either a local jurisdiction, such as the city, pass it or the county. If the Bear County would have passed this PACE program, Castle Hills would not have to adopt it as well.
And why did they fail to pass it?
They, they just have not decided to do that.
Okay.
I don't have a specific reason, they just haven't chosen to do so.
Mr. Gregory?
When you begin to consultation with our city attorneys to hammer out a problem or problems that may occur, who pays the hourly bill of our city attorneys?
Most likely, the involvement of your city attorney wouldn't be, I don't know who your property tax collectors are, if you have an outside firm. It would most likely be those...
It's a Limeburger.
Limeburger. It would be Limeburger that would take care of any issues regarding a PACE program, and they would be reimbursed with the penalties and interest on that, on that piece of the loan.
So anything submitted by our attorneys to you or any other agencies, you would be paying for it, not us?
Yes. If there's an issue, where ACOG is going to take the lead, as well as our partner, Texas PACE Authority. Yes.
Is that found anywhere in the code?
I'm not sure.
Or is this just your opinion?
I don't know if it's directly within the ILA, but as a city, if there's an issue, just direct them to us and we will take care of it.
Any further questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes three to two.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, council members.
Proceeding to item number five. Discussion and possible action, resolution 2020-09-23-A, authorizing the city manager to enter and manage a PACE program interlocal agreement by and between the Alma Area Council of Governments and the City of Castle Hills. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this would be the interlocal to manage the PACE program. And obviously, it spells out the responsibilities between the city and, as Mr. Clamp said, obviously mostly ACOG to manage this program when they're doing projects.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we accept resolution number 2020-09-23-A, authorizing the city manager to enter into and manage a PACE program interlocal agreement.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, counsel. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
I'm gonna be in favor of it because, if I may say so, because we've already approved the thing, so there's no reason not to be.
Okay, thank you. All opposed? Motion passes four to one. Thank you, counsel. Let's see here. Item number six, presentation and acceptance of the fiscal year 2019 audit and the annual financial report prepared by Armstrong, Vaughn &amp; Associates. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Debbie Frazier here is from Armstrong, Vaughn &amp; Associates here to present the fact and findings of the audit. Earlier, I sent you a memo that kind of summarized the background explanation of the audit process this year. We did use an outside auditor for the court through Mr. Milo Martinez of the Martinez-Rosar &amp; Company, who strictly looked at the courts and our general fund revenue. And so his report is incorporated with Ms. Frazier as a complete audit and be ready to present it to you today.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Frazier. I'm from Armstrong, Vaughn &amp; Associates. And I'm just gonna go through this really quickly because I see some of you are new, so we'll go through the financial statements in a little more detail. But you did receive an independent auditor's report that was unmodified, and we relied on Mr. Martinez's firm for the 843,000 or 10% of the city's revenues, which made up municipal court revenues. That's on page one. If you turn to page 10, this is your statement of net position. And if all of you will remember, the statements in your audit are presented two ways. The first way is a full accrual statement, and then the second set is a modified accrual statement. The full accrual statement, which begins on 10 and 11, include things such as capital assets, deferred outflows, which are your pension liabilities and your pension outflows. It also contains capital lease as a liability, as well as compensated absences, and then your net pension liability. So at the beginning, or during the year, you actually had total assets of 20.2 million. Your deferred outflows, which relate to your TMRS pensions and other post-employment benefit, make up 1.3 million. You had total liabilities of four, almost 5 million. Deferred inflows, which three point, almost 3.6 million of that are your property taxes that are levied for the following year.
(inaudible).
And then your total net position at the end of the year was 13 million. 2.5 million of that, or approximately 2.5, was unrestricted. The net investment in capital is almost 6.9 million. Any questions on those pages? Again, this was the full accrual statement. On page 12, this is your statement of activities, again, on a full accrual basis. Your total governmental expenditures were 7.2 million. Your charges for service, or direct charges for service for specific expenses, was 1.7 million, and you had operating grants of 13,208. leaving you with net expenses over revenues of 5,471,000. Then your total general revenues brought in 6.6 million, leaving you with a positive change in net position of 1,002. So you ended the year with, or 13 million in your net position, up 1.2 from last year's 11.8 million. On page 13 is where your modified accrual statements begin. Again, you don't see fixed assets here. You would see fixed assets expensed in the statement of revenues and expenditures. It's a use. It's, they use the resources as they go. So, in the balance sheet, your total assets for all funds, this included general revenue, street repair, drainage fund, and then all your non-major funds. Your total assets were 12.8 million. 9.1 million of that is cash and then another 1.3 million is investments. Your liabilities were 1,4920. Again, this doesn't include your capital leases. Your capital leases are expensed as you pay for in the modified accrual statements. Your deferred inflows of resources, this is your unavailable property tax revenue, which basically is outstanding tax as of 9/30/19. And then you have property taxes levied for future period of close to 3.6 billion. So your year doesn't end with the tax year. So these are items that are collected October, November and December and available for your next budget year. Your fund balance is 8,63,604. Of that, you had an unassigned balance of 3,568,000. This makes up approximately six months of your operating revenue for the next fiscal year. I'm going to have you turn back to page 39. This is the schedule of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance for the general fund. And it's as you budgeted. And it's the general fund only. So you actually budgeted to bring in 7,56,537. You actually brought in 7,98,290, which was 41,000 above what you budgeted in your final budget. Your total expenditures were 8,113,144 and the total expenditures that were budgeted were 6.7 million. And you'll notice that we had an increase or an unfavorable balance in capital outlay of 1.7 million. This is your antler project, basically, that was not completely budgeted, or was not budgeted for. You had proceeds from sale of capital assets of 33,250. You had a transfer in from other funds of 236,000, leaving you with a net change in fund balance of a negative 745,596. So that reduced your fund balance from 5.2 down to 4.5 million. Any questions on that so far? I just want to paint, point out on page 43, or beginning on page 43, this is your required supplemental information. You only see this information on your statement of financial position. That was the full accrual statements that we presented at the very beginning. That was the first statement I went over. You, if you look the third line from the bottom, this is your planned fiduciary net position as a percentage of total pension liability. It's 84.4%. This, the GFOA, Governmental Financial Officers Association recommends that anything over 70% is well-funded. So you're 14% above that and that's very good. But I want you to see that last year you were 92.5% funded. It went down because the investments, the net investment income for 2017 was 2 million and you had a loss of $500,000 last year. Again, TMRS is your Texas municipal retirement system and that's where all your employees have their, or you provide pension through TMRS for the employees. And they actually invest your money and perform an actuarial study on the calendar year. So this is as of calendar year 2018. If you turn to page 45, you have a total OPEB liability of 214,772 at the end of the year. And this is basically the retirees' portion of your supplemental death benefit.
Ms. Frazier? I think Mr. Gregory had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Coming around to it, in '09, we were faced with a huge bill from the state. And the projected increase, that Texas projected that would have to go into the pension liability, was not being met and we had an enormous bill we had to come up with. What is, in the future, what is, what is Texas projecting now? I think they were talking about 7 or 8% at that time. Have they come down in their projections?
Well, they changed their actuarial method from, I can't remember, projected unit credit to entry age normal. So, projected unit credit was kind of like a bell curve and the entry age for the employees. So as they started the first five years, they would probably be at a rate and then as they began to go into their career, it kind of went up and followed their career and back down. Now, as you start, it's the entry age normal. So, they predict your age and your retirement information based on you starting that date and continuing employment for the next 20 or 30 years. So it should, so basically it should correct itself. That's why they changed to the entry age normal.
So when you say it corrects itself, you mean the end result is basically the same?
The end result, you've accounted for those employees throughout their lifetime rather than on a bell curve.
So that takes away the fluctuation of percentage of the state?
Yes, sir, yes.
But we don't, we're, what's the chance of the state changing their mind?
I don't, I, there's pretty strict requirements around GASB 68, so I do not think that they will. I don't think they have the opportunity to. And TMRS, if you remember, is a pretty conservative investor.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions on the report? We did have some comments. Well, first you have the government, the communication with those charged with governance. We have our responsibilities, plan, scope and timing of the audit, compliance with all ethic requirements regarding independence. We were independent. I want to point out that we did have significant policies or estimates with the useful lives of capital assets, allowance for uncollectible receivables for property taxes and the actual, actuarial valuation on net pension liability as well as your OPEB. Those are estimates based on calculations by a firm called GRS that performs them for TMRS. The financial statements disclosures that we thought were most sensitive were those relating to the Texas municipal retirement system. We had uncorrected and corrected misstatement. So we had a construction in progress that was understated in the prior year by 35,998 and then we recognized it this year in capital outlay, so it was overstated by the same amount. This fell under your materiality level, so we did not change it. We left it as it was. Public Investment Act, you actually did not approve a investment policy for 2019. So we're required to report that. However, you did approve a policy in March 2020. Other significant issues, we had some issues with a check that didn't clear. The city manager is currently working with bank to recover the funds. It was basically a fraudulent check that went through your bank account. The city's internal control policy on GASB Statement 68 currently does not address the review of the employee census data recorded in the TMRS employee pension records. The reason this is important is because your actuarial study is based on those statistics. Are you a male or a female? Are you, what date were you hired by the city? What was your date of birth? And then, you know, your, your income. So you want to review those on a regular basis and ensure that they are correct. And we'd just like to see you have a policy where you at least sampled or sent a memo to your employees that said, we've reviewed these. You can't change them here at the city. The employee has to go into their own file and change those. That's why we feel it's important. The city currently uses Assist as accounting system. The system does not have the capability of interfacing with the court system, building permits and other items to track on the same accounting system. The court system and the building permits are tracked on ENCODE and the other items are tracked on spreadsheets. Therefore, there's a lot of manual entry that you could otherwise just upload if you had the same type of system. Additionally, reconciliation of the municipal court bonds are not being performed. This should be done on a monthly basis. As of the end of the year, the city did not have a capitalization policy. However, you approved one in June 2020, so you've taken care of that. During permit testing, we were unable to recalculate permit charges based on the city's fee. I don't know if you remember, but last year the permits changed three or four times. So, and the state pushed down a law. So, we had some issues and we're just, we just think that if you had an ENCODE system and you put the actual rates in there, it would eliminate any errors. And the city was unable to produce cash collateral reports for the fiscal year in December 31 during fieldwork. However, we did receive them in August and the city should ensure that the collateral reports are obtained from the banking entity and reviewed monthly for sufficiency of collateral balances. I think the information was going to an employee who no longer works here and so the city is now receiving this report monthly. During the audit testing, it was noted that the city cash revenue deposits to the bank were not timely and were sometimes delayed two or three weeks. At times, this resulted in errors that were not corrected for several months. This day delay was due to the city's use of part-time employees in the finance department to perform specific tax, tasks. City management did not appoint anyone else to take the deposits to the bank. And I think it's important to note that last year, in 2019, you had two employees working in the finance department, but one, the finance clerk, worked about 970 hours and then you had the finance director who worked about 375. So they worked between the two of them about 301 hours, which is not sufficient for this size of a city.
Which, which Ms. Frazier, the numbers actually add up to about 1,300 hours for the entire year. 25 hours alone for two employees a week, which technically should be about 4,000 hours between two employees in that office. So, from that standpoint, I think that was a pretty good job based on, on the duties that were involved with those two employees coming in part-time and obviously that's been since rectified in the last budget.
I had a material weakness and basically it follows the same logic. In, in your finance department, you really need to have better staffing to prevent, to make sure that all the work is performed. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Mr. May?
Ms. Frazier, thank you for your presentation. You do other assessments or audits for other municipalities. Are we average? Are we in the top quartile? Are we in the top 10%? What would you say?
I, I'm not going to answer that question because I think that that's hard to do. You know, there's a variety of different functions in a city and some work really well at different places, some work average and it's just really hard to compare. Financially, you're doing well.
We're not failing. We are doing well.
You're not failing. No, you received an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that you can receive. You had six months' worth of operating expenditures in your fund balance to go into the following year and your TMRS is funded 84%. So I'd say that you're, you're doing a good job.
Councilman, was your question, Councilman May, was your question online with how we compared other cities' staffing in the finance office or just financial position in whole?
Just general and finances. As, from your view, you've seen other municipalities, you've seen the documentation, you've seen how we budget and how we carry forth that budget. That was really the thrust of my question.
I think your budgeting has improved greatly in the past couple of years. It's, you know, it's gone from a spreadsheet to more of a booklet model and it has a transmittal letter at the front and I think it is a very nice presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gregory?
I've sat through quite a lot of these audits and I just want to let the council know that Ms. Frazier's firm is a top-quality firm. They have done extremely good work. They continue to do extremely good work. All a spade is paid when they see something wrong and sometimes you want to hide under the desk, but it gets corrected. Nobody's, no organization is perfect. I appreciate the work that you've done through the years and I think the council has more than gotten its money's worth from what you've done and your firm has produced. Thank you so much for your work product.
Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. Your explanations have been very helpful. I do have a question, though. If you read, I don't know, I'm not an expert at this kind of stuff, but if you read through all of these letters and things and the introductory letter, it doesn't give you a great positive feeling about the city. I mean, to me. Perhaps I'm missing something.
I wouldn't, you know, generally, I don't have a city that doesn't have any comment.
I'm sorry?
Generally, I do not have a city that has no comment.
Yeah.
We participate on the city of San Antonio audit and they have comments. So, I don't think necessarily getting a comment is bad. I just think we're telling you, you need to approve it for next year and we're kind of giving you some guidance.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I think what I'm saying is I don't see anything that says, you guys are doing a good job.
That's really not our job, to tell you that we're, you're doing a good job. We're giving you an opinion on the financial statements and how they're presented.
I think councilman, you know, obviously those are internal control suggestions for us to work on. And last year, you know, I think Ms. Frazier had that we didn't have an investment policy. We've since then developed a more robust investment policy moving forward. So, it's, it's, it's an idea to see vulnerability and work towards improvement for the next year's audit. That's the way I see it.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
It's not to pull you down and slap you around. It's just to give you suggestions and hope you improve.
Which is, which is a wonderful thing. But, I don't know, there's seven suggestions or so. And I'm looking at the top of page four, for example. It says, during the audit for the year ending December 31, we noted the following suggestions for improvement that have not been resolved. But actually, some of them have been resolved.
They were not resolved in 2019, but yes, they have been resolved since then.
Right, but it doesn't say that.
I think we noted, we noted them if they have been resolved.
What I'm thinking of is this, this thing is going to be read by some folks thinking about giving us some certificates of obligation.
So you'd like me to change that to say they?
I would, I would appreciate that, putting it in a, you know, a little bit more positive light. Because some of those things have been resolved. And perhaps there's a way to phrase it, something like, we noted during the course of the audit in 2019 that these issues remain, but as of the writing of this letter, the following issues have been resolved.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Any further comments, council?
I have a couple for May. I think that you're
I think that the improvement of council since the beginning of the year shows the improvement that we allow our staff to have the ability. We were cut short and started in June of 2018. So we pretty much self-inflicted ourselves. And we've come back now, I believe, and rectified that. The other situation that's been at the forefront, and I'm glad Mr. Rappley brought it forward, and Ms. Frazier mentions it every year. We were on track to get ENCODE so that our accounting system would be integrated. So we don't have the excess labor. So we don't have the possibility of errors. And that council was supposed to do it. They were going to check with cities. They didn't do it. I would like to hope, I'm glad Mr. Rappley said, we're going to move forward on trying to bring this back and get this thing straight so we can have an integrated accounting system so that we don't have these type of errors, which are going to naturally happen if the majority of your work and transfer of your work is done by hand. So I appreciate Mr. Rappley's looking into that and hopefully we'll get that rectified real soon. But moving forward, I think that everybody on council now recognizes and understands that as running a city is running a business, you have certain needs, you have certain obligations, and you have certain responsibilities to make sure that you fill the positions so that you can do the job that we've been asked to do for the citizens of the city. Thank you.
Mr. Paul, just so you know, I mean, again, as I alluded to in my memo, the mayor suggested that I reach out to ENCODE and see if we can get a similar pricing and/or recoup some of the money we lost a couple of years ago. So I'm working on seeing if we can get some of that discounted dollars back and get a new process and timeline and a cost that I hope to bring forward to council here soon.
Well, thank you. I think you will find that you have a favorable council to do, that knows the importance of such an item.
Thank you, Mr.
I've already reached out to the ENCODE representative and told them that basically we wanted to revisit this and, and again, work to recoup some of the money we lost a couple of years ago that we put down as part of the initial contract.
Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor and council, first of all, Mr. Joyce, thank you for your suggestion because I think it's an excellent one that really helps to frame this up. And I appreciate the willingness to consider that as, as part of our final report. You know, my, my reaction to this is an audit of our finances, what I read here leads me to believe we're in pretty good shape in our finances. As I would expect anyone would do in the process of going through this exercise, they would look for opportunities of where you can do better. And I think we should always embrace that input that we receive. And the important point in this is the input that we have received here, and none of those items have already been addressed. So I think we are very much going in the right direction and it's, and moving very quickly at it. I will say on the, the question of ENCODE, I've sat in the audience year after year as these audits have come before the council and heard the same thing said about ENCODE over and over again. And this is a reminder to us, I think, not of worrying so much about what the, this looks like so much as it is to our obligation to help the city staff, help the city to address some of these problems that have gone unaddressed for multiple years now. And it strikes me in listening to the presentation tonight that part of what I've heard is that some of the deficiencies that we have experienced have been because of decisions that have been made about staffing or lack of staffing here to properly manage the financials of the city, the record-keeping of the city. And we have an opportunity to change that this year. So I feel very good about what I hear in this report. I feel very good about the progress that the city manager has already made in addressing this and certainly about the opportunities that we have to act this year to address some of these others once and for all that have been sitting there.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. May, you gonna make a motion? Do you have a comment?
I have a motion.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Sure.
Ms. Frazier, I just wanted to thank you for completing the audit. Having sat through these, a couple, several of these with you, I think one of the things that I've seen and my colleagues have echoed is the need for an integrated system. I understand that you can't specifically endorse ENCODE, but I'd hope that we would hear your message that we need a better system and move forward with that so we can address that issue permanently.
ENCODE is most likely the best for you to go to because you already have aspects of your organization that are on ENCODE, such as your municipal court revenues and your, and some other items. So yes, I mean, whatever system you decide, you just need something that's much better than a QuickBooks version.
And Mayor, can I also mention that in looking and exploring, that we did not do a couple of years ago with ENCODE, and I've mentioned this to Ms. Frazier, that there's a module on there about payroll. Right now, we do paper time sheets. And so I'd like to get to a point to where we actually have a portal that employees can log in and track their hours and have their supervisor sign off. Because as Ms. Davis can tell you, when we do payroll, there's review, stack, sign off, and it's much easier and much less susceptible to make sure accurately employees are doing the time that they are doing here in Castle Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Ms. Frazier, ENCODE is not the sole entity that small cities use. There are quite a lot of different entities. I think incorporation is probably a good thing. But I, I think the council, before we incorporate everything into one thing, make sure that we want that one thing.
That one system.
As I said, there may be other systems like ENCODE, better than ENCODE, that could be incorporated for an entire city.
Yeah, there's, there's other systems, New World, SWT. ENCODE is primarily used in, in this area. And so what it, what it would do would make it easier, whoever took over in finance or whoever was working in finance. It's easy to call another city and say, hey, you use ENCODE. How do you, I have this issue with BankRec. How do you fix it? Or something like that. I, that's more the reason that I think probably ENCODE's a good idea. But, you know, there, yes, there's other, there's other systems. There's quite a few other systems.
I think it might be smart if the council not only looked, but the incorporation idea is probably a good idea. But they want to make sure that if we're going to keep ENCODE, that we've looked at other systems also. We have not looked at other systems in a long time. And the thing that I found disagreeable with ENCODE is their aggressive way of selling things. They push far more bells and whistles on cities that cities really need. But that's a sales-type thing. And I, but I've seen that with the Crime Control District and other things at which they've come in and suggested all sorts of things that were good for a city of 50,000 people, but we're less than 5,000 people. But I, I do hope the council will take a hard look at other entities as well as ENCODE. And once we find that entity, we incorporate everything into it. I think that would be the wisest thing to do. Would you not think that's a good idea?
I, I think it's good to look at all systems. You know, that's, that you do have ENCODE with several systems. So the benefit of going, you know, you would like to have your municipal court revenues, your
Permitting.
Permitting all on the same type because otherwise you're, you're in the same boat. You have to make journal entries and
I see incorporation aspect.
So, so Ms. Frazier, by doing that, that, that allows for susceptibility errors because you're doing duplicative work.
Mr. Mayor? May I comment?
Yes, sir.
We heard that same talk in June of 2018 by a couple of people on council at the time. And they were going to look into it and they failed to allow our city manager to pursue other options. They were going to look into it and take care of it. So we're hearing the same conversation now. I think Mr. Rappley will reach out and find the best system, whether it be ENCODE or Assis or whatever the case may be, and get the money's worth that we need to make sure that we are efficient. But, you know, like I say, we've been down this road two years ago and it's time to get past it. And that's that our city manager and buy and bring two or three of them to us and so we can get this done and taken care of.
Mr. Paul, I couldn't agree more. I think we should let the city manager do what he does best and run the city.
Thank you.
Point. Mr. May, you had a motion?
I did. Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council adopt the fiscal year 2019 audit and annual financial report conducted by Armstrong Bond and Associates with the additional suggestions made by Councilman Joyce regarding how the city council has addressed the deficiencies from 2019.
We have a first by Mr. May and a second by Mr. Gregory. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much, council. Thank you, Ms. Frazier.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and skip item number seven temporarily and proceed to item number eight. Discussion of possible action on authorization to purchase a Continental 40-pound extractor BNC Technologies gear dryer for the Castle Hills Fire Department. Mr. Rappley?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This item is a part of the request to purchase that we had submitted to the county for the COVID expense under the CARES Act. And this portion has already been agreed upon and authorized by the county as a reimbursement. So what I wanted to do was get council's authority on, on purchasing this. And then the next two items, which are all, have been approved and accepted by the county for reimbursement, we will bring back a budget amendment in November to address these with council.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. And just to clarify, the extractor is basically a washing machine that removes the carcinogenic chemicals from the bunker gear to keep our firefighters safe.
Yes, and again, they were, they were able to go to another fire department to clean the bunker gear. And they not are able to go to other fire departments because of potentially COVID exposure. I think that the chief went through a presentation of his request for funded items and talked about this and specifically the need for our fire department right now. And it's just obviously something now that can be reimbursed because of the inability for our firefighters to go to other departments to get these bunker gears cleaned now.
Got it. Council? Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor, I'd move approval of the purchase of the Continental extractor BNC Technologies gear dryer for the Castle Hills Fire Department.
First and second by Mr. May. Or first by Mr. Isbrand, second by Mr. May. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Item number nine, discussion of possible action and authorization to purchase a Mako Model BAM 06H E3 breathing air module compressor package for the Castle Hills Fire Department. Just to clarify, this is another COVID line item that will help isolate our firefighters and keep them away from other unnecessary contact.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Isbrand?
I'd move approval of the purchase of the Mako Module breathing air system for the City of Castle Hills Fire Department.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. A second by Mr. May. Any discussion? All in favor?
Again, this is an item where chief, other, you're, you used to go to other fire departments to do. Yeah.
Okay. And lastly, discussion of possible action on approval to fund the remodeling of the bunker rooms/bathroom for the Castle Hills Fire Department.
Mayor, was there a vote on the prior action under item nine?
Yes, sir. It was all in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. I have number 10. Mr. Isbrand?
And I'll move approval of funding for the remodeling of the firefighter bunk rooms/bathroom for the City of Castle Hills Fire Department.
Thank you. First by Mr. Isbrand, second by Mr. May, Mr. Joyce.
Just a quick comment, if I may, just a suggestion for chief and Mr. Rappley that with respect to the ventilation system, to make sure to achieve what you guys wanted to achieve in terms of separating the air from the guys, I would suggest you get a mechanical engineer to help you with that. To help design a system that will achieve what you wanted to achieve.
Yes, we've, we've had those individuals in and gone through that already. Yes, sir.
Good, thank you.
And, and just in general, council, I know it's not on the agenda, but we're working feverishly to get everything together and, and, and start sending that to the county in the next couple of days from that standpoint.
Okay. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief. Item number 11, discussion of possible action ordinance 2020-09-23, amending sections 48-105 of chapter 48 of the Code of Ordinances to declare untreated oak wilt a nuisance to revise provisions as to treating oak wilt and to revise the penalty for violations of oak wilt, of the oak wilt provisions. If you remember, we've had this up for discussion several times and hopefully we can have a final discussion so we can get an ordinance on the books. Mr. Rappley? Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. What I handed out, Mr. Fletcher did a survey of cities of what they do in regards to your oak wilt ordinances to make sure from not only requirements but penalties. And this is a summary of about 12 different cities. And so what we wanted to make sure that, that council knew that based on Mr. Fletcher's findings that Castle Hills regulations are comparable to other cities serve with $1,000 fine, more aggressive seven-day notice requirement. However, in light of the comments, the proposed ordinance amended would allow for 10 days to cure period and a daily fine of 500. On the second page there, we kind of developed a flow chart about how we'd follow the process for notification and moving forward for oak wilt when we have found that as an issue. I've talked to a couple of their cities, especially Chavino Park. If a property has some, a property owner has one in question, they have got a third-party arborist to go out and, and do a sample to determine and diagnose oak wilt because the forestry service just comes out and develops the perimeter. They'd actually go onto someone's property and determine that that particular tree has oak wilt. So it might be in the best interest of moving forward and at times getting an arborist, if necessary, to do a diagnosis and test the tree for oak wilt. And then we put down here, proposed establishment. I just wanted to mention this to council. This is what Chavino Park does. They set aside a fund for commercial permitting fees to start with offsetting residents to basically help remove a tree, which has been diagnosed and cannot be recovered from any remedies to oak wilt treatment. So I just want to make sure council's aware of, of that particularly. With that, I know Mr. Paul had had a suggestion as far as what he would like to have, and I'll let Mr. Paul cover that. I do have a copy of an ordinance that has been developed by Mr. Fletcher in regards to the findings of what other cities do and, and got it to the point to have us look at a 10-day notice and a $500 not-to-exceed penalty. And I have a copy of that if council would like to review it right now. And Mr. Fletcher's on the line and Mr. Schnaw, if we'd like to go through that process.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council? Mr. Isbrand?
I'm asking if we have copies of it coming. Thank you.
Mayor, real quick, I just wanted to make sure again, I'll let Mr. Fletcher or Mr. Schnaw cover the ordinance and the language. And, you know, between really myself, not myself, but between Mr. Zamarone and developing how a flow chart would work and the process that would be involved with our code officer and tracking and following up with residents in this case, this is kind of the process we'd follow. But between Mr. Zamarone and I, we obviously think 10 days is enough, which is common to any other code violations here. And the standard practice would be suffice.
Before we get into the thick of it, I guess the first thing that popped up to me was the on-call contractor. Do we know how much the on-call contractor would charge per visit? Mr. Rappley?
I, I don't have that. I was, I was asking I I don't have that. I was I was asking um, uh, Chavino Park, I was going to get that information, how much they, who they use and how much they uh, they said they've only had a a a minimal amount of oak wilt, so it's a minimal cost. And um, I think Mr. Hill, the the city manager over there, said that um it's even thirty or forty dollars just to get a test sent to see and identify if it is oak wilt.
I guess my concern was whether or not it's positive, the fees would still rack up. Uh, I just want to make sure that we don't put ourselves at a very deficit.
And I think if we go that route, then that would be something to bring back for council approval.
Well, I guess we need a motion to approve before we can talk about this.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mayor, real quick, I just wanted to, before that, I, and I know it's difficult because Mr. Paul is 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 there Zoom. Mr. Paul's suggestion, in which I provided to Mr. Fletcher and and Mr. Schnau earlier today. Um, his was uh amending section forty-eight one oh five of chapter forty-eight of the code ordinances to declare untreated oak wilt a nuisance to set a deadline, ten days, business days from notification for treatment of oak wilt infestation and to authorize the city to remediate or remove untreated oak wilt. In the event the property owner does not act within ten ti- ten ten-day timeframe and to authorize the city an invoice to the owner for the remediation or removal of the tree and to place a lien in the property if the owner does not pay for the invoice within ten days from the day to the postmark on the invoice. And like I said, I think Mr. Fletcher and Mr. Schnau have incorporated some of Mr. Paul's thoughts in this current ordinance you're reviewing. Is that correct, sir? Or sirs?
Uh, yes, um, I'll let Mr. Fletcher speak as well, but um what what we've done is incorporate in uh two of the three primary suggestions Mr. Paul made. Uh, one was to increase the amount of time that a property owner has to begin this process from seven days to ten business days, and essentially ten business days is fourteen calendar days. Um, we also um scaled back the penalty, so the penalty is a maximum of five hundred dollars um per offense. And and it's not a minimum of five hundred dollars per offense, um which puts the um actual penalty within the sound discretion of the municipal court judge. The suggestion Mr. Paul made about give sending an invoice and um uh then filing a lien. I I think can be done administratively um without it being in the ordinance itself. But the the risk in limiting the timing of filing a lien is that we could be in a weaker position if the property owner were to file a bankruptcy. Um, we would be in a weaker position as an unsecured creditor with no lien than we would be as a secured creditor with a lien. Uh, but uh as a practical matter, the city could implement implement a process whereby um, once the city completes a wor- the work, an invoice is sent out with a with a a warning to the property owner that if the invoice is not paid within X days, um, the city will be filing a lien. The number of people who would then run and go file a bankruptcy just for that is probably very low. But but I do want the council to be aware that um in a in a bankruptcy contest contact context, you're much better off with a secured claim rather than an unsecured claim. And um, Mr. Fletcher and I also discussed, and he may comment on um uh the possibility of including something in the ordinance that would, even after a a citation is issued, um, would would allow a property owner to be relieved of a fine, not charged a fine, if they can bring proof to a court hearing that they have implemented the remedial action. Again, uh, you know, we can, you know, add that uh to the ordinance. I'm gonna let Mr. Fletcher comment on that.
We we have a third version that incorporates Mr. Paul's uh requested changes um in place right now, or drafted, I should say. Uh, and I guess the only and I think there's really, really no other changes than Mark, other than what Mark has mentioned. Uh, besides maybe one other, just requiring proof of notification by certified mail.
May I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I tried to ma- make mine, as you can tell, brief. To me, the issue, again, as we've been discussing each time, is to identify the problem and rectify the problem. And you'll notice in my particular ordinance, I did not go to section one oh eight. I did not try to increase penalties. We have the penalties already in place, so I didn't try to change that. I just tried to expedite the need to get notification, to process the issue and to get it moving. And whatever y'all come up with, you're the attorneys, I'm just poor old country boy out here. And uh, but it I I just, I I'm not, I just don't see continuing to add or do anything different with the penalties that we already have. The penalty is going to be enough that they're going to be looking at, they need to get this fixed. And truthfully, the follow-through depends on the city. And it's how we react to the knowledge once we get it and what we should do. That's just my thought.
And and Mr. Paul, I I think that with the revisions that Mr. Fletcher made in one oh eight, it is almost the same as the current ordinance.
Okay. I guess I didn't see that one.
I I think what what it 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 certainly makes the financial penalty, the 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 cap out at five hundred dollars, which is what the penalty is permitted under section one dash seventeen of our Code of Ordinances. I think we did add, however, um, that we could seek court action to enforce compliance with the provisions of the article. And and that's an alternative to uh the city doing it. You know, i- in addition to that opportunity for the city to do it in, and then file a lien. Um, we did add to the penalty provision that the city could go to court, try and force the property owner to do it. I mean, we we've already discussed a little bit this evening how it it's real unclear right now. We don't have all the information about what remediation might cost um in an average case. There may not be an average case in oak wilt. Um, Mr. Rappley, I think, did talk to Mr. Hill and got some idea about um what remediation could cost. And um, uh, you know, we we would like to see the the property owner take the lead on that if at all possible, rather than the city spend the money.
I had one other question that I don't see in this one that I put in mind, and again, I defer to you and Paul. On what was I have sent over by your, by, from you. It says a deadline for treatment of oak wilt infestation and to authorize the city to remediate or remove untreated oak wilt and place a lien on the property. It doesn't say to first give them the opportunity to fix it. That that implies you just run, put a lien on it and go for it. And that's why I had the timeframes put in mind and basically said that if the property owner fails to do it.
Now, that, I I think, Mr. Paul, if if you'll if you'll look at the um the document that I think Mr. Rappley has circulated to everyone. And near the, in the, in the, the second last paragraph on page two, uh, which is part of new section forty-eight one oh five. It says, in the event that the owner of the property where the oak wilt is confirmed, fails to timely initiate all re- remediation measures recommended by the State Forest Service or certified arborists to control and prevent the spread within ten business days or fails to carry out the remediation, then the city is authorized to remediate. So we we have incorporated that. What we did not incorporate in, and and it wouldn't be a difficult change, would be to incorporate um very specifically um that the city would send a notice letter or would send an invoice um with a demand um and a warning that the the lien could be imposed. And if that is important and you feel that's a an appropriate thing to do, you know, we can, you know, incorporate that language in. Um, it may already be in Mr. Fletcher's version three.
I guess I don't have.
Incorporate something in like that if it if if you feel that's appropriate. If the governing body feels it's appropriate.
I just want to make sure that the homeowner has the opportunity to rectify the issue before we start threatening liens and doing all this, and we work through the process. If they don't perform like they're supposed to, then we have to do it, then of course we can attach a lien if that be the case. That's all. Whatever the process, however the flow is, I'm for, I'm okay with it. And like I said, that's that's what we pay all the big bucks for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mark, council is looking at the third revised that Paul did, and I sent that to Mr. Paul as well, so that's the same one, sir.
Okay. I'm not sure I'm looking at the right one. But um.
So then, portion would talk, would you would, which talks about the notification and the timely compliance would be noticed as subpart C. Forty-eight dash one oh five, subpart C. Which reads, in the event the owner of the property where the oak wilt confirmed fails within ten business days of notification to treat, and it goes on to say that the city can go ahead and.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So everyone's looking at a different version from the one I was looking at.
So, Mark, we're all looking at Paul's version. I maybe he didn't CC you on it, so.
If you had ten days, that's the late, uh, it should be the latest version, so.
Mr. Fletcher, a quick question for you. When it says removed, what's the definition of removed? Only because I asked that to myself. Does that mean just cutting it at the base, or do you have to remove the stump?
So I think it's going to depend on what the arborist recommends, uh, but I think usually it's going to be removal of the entire tree, including the stump. But I think that may also be based on the scope and degree of uh infestation.
And Mayor, um, just in talking to Mr. Hill in Chavino Park, when they had one incident of oak wilt, it cost, uh, they trenched in the property, removed the entire tree, and it was about twelve thousand dollars. But they had that fund set aside to do that.
Twelve thousand, Mr. Joyce, which is kind of where I'm of the opinion that, I don't know that this uh pre-trading treat fees will put a dent in one of the.
Well, I I don't know, Mayor, how long they've had that in place, and it it the funds accrue in there, or how many years it's they've been doing it. Um, but that that's just one incident he told me uh that they spent to trench and remove a tree.
Chavino Park did that for the for the homeowner?
Yes, and again, that they got the outside arborist and, because the homeowner um was was in conflict or 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 basically saying that um denying that it is, and then they got it tested to confirm. And once they did con- confirm and test, that's when they went through the process to remove the tree at that cost.
I think that the deposit idea is good on how we handle the permit fees and things like that. And like you said, that needs to be worked on, brought that back to council, in my opinion.
Mr. Gregory.
I appreciate the work that Fletcher has done. I think we ought to look at Fair Oaks Ranch. Their no notice requirement with the penalty not exceed five hundred. And the reason that is like that is Fair Oaks is very similar to us in the fact that they are just filthy with trees all over the place, and they know the destruction would occur if it's left unchecked. By the way, you ought to go down and see Carrollwood again. It looks like another lot has now contracted the disease. Second, there's, and I don't know how to get around this. If taking out one tree costs X, we're going to have lots that have four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten trees. And I I'm not really sure what to do if the city goes in there and it costs the city twenty thousand dollars for one lot to remove ten trees. If you transport that over to, for instance, the uh where the 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 oaks are very dense in parts of our city, we could be looking at twenty or thirty trees to be removed. So uh, this funding could get way out of hand if it if it gets into the wrong part of the city. It's already in a bad part right now, but if it gets where there's a density of oak trees and it it costs a thousand dollars to remove a tree and there are twenty, thirty, forty, fifty that have to be removed on one lot, we're in a real pickle. If the homeowner decides they're just not going to do anything, they're not going to pay anything until they die. And so it's a, I think it also ought to have a a fine of eight percent per year compounding if they refuse to do anything on with regard to the lien. But uh, it's tricky what the city is, has to do. It has to do something. But it could cost the city a great deal of money on the one hand, if you have an intransigent homeowner. He just says, I can't pay, I'm not going to pay, you can't force me to pay. So uh, I think the city has to be aware of that. With regard to trenching, there's a real danger. When we we looked at this twelve or fifteen years ago, we had an arborist that came out on uh, I think it was Trent's and said, we have to trench. Well, the trenching went into the street. And he is, he he was basically wanting to build a moat around the yard, which include tearing up a good portion of the street. Trenching can cost an absolute fortune. And you, it there's another aspect. If we, if we're going to start picking up a tab for these various things, it's going to run into a lot of money. So uh, I don't know exactly what to do if you have somebody who says, I'm not going to pay anything now, I'm not going to pay any thing in the future. The the city wants to do it, go ahead and do it. We're going to have a big bill uh from one lot or two lots or five lots. I counted about thirty-five trees over there. It may have to be taken out if they're dead. And that's thirty-five thousand dollars if they charge a thousand dollars a tree.
Mr. Gregory, so.
I'm not really sure where where it's going. I just know we're opening ourselves up to a real liability here if if you have an intransigent homeowner.
Mr. Gregory, I think you're absolutely right, and that's why I was a little bit reticent on the idea that the city would go in and file a lien. You know, I think some of these large properties could be several hundred thousand dollars, depending on the mitigation recommended by a certified arborist. If it gets too extreme where you have to remove all the trees and do the trench around the property, I could easily see in that being several hundred thousand dollars. And I don't know that the city holding a lien in perpetuity leaves us any better off in the immediate future.
Well, you have to do, you're right. You have to do something, though, because if what we have right now isn't caught, it's moving rapidly, it's very obvious. And uh, the city has a responsibility to do something, to to force people to act. And uh, I'm not sure setting up a fund to to help them pay for the activity is the way to go.
Well, setting up a fund is not is not part of this tonight, though. Am I correct?
Uh, I believe that is correct, Mr. Paul.
We just need to move on what's in front of us right now, don't we?
Yes.
Okay.
I truthfully don't know that we're ever going to get it perfect. I imagine this is much of like what we've done in the past, is a little bit of a living document that we may have to tweak in the future as things change, but I think it's important that we act so that we can get something on the books.
On that, the mayor and I agree.
Mr. Isbrand.
Can I um ask a question here? Um, just to make sure I understand. In the heading of this proposed ordinance, it references a fine of not more than five hundred dollars per offense and each day being a separate offense. In section forty-eight dash one oh eight, it refers to general penalties described in section one dash seventeen, which I've actually called up here and trying to read if my glasses wouldn't fog up. Why is the language different? Is there some nuance to this that we should be aware of?
Mr. Isbrand, I believe that that first sentence in section forty-eight oh Mr. Isbrand, I believe that, that first sentence in section 4808 was the same as, as, as Mr. Fletcher has edited it to remove the reference to those three other sections. I believe that sentence is the same wording that was in, that is currently in section 48108. I, I would have to walk down the hall to get my copy of that, but I'm pretty sure that's the case. And it's very typical in city ordinances, rather than reciting what the fine is, to simply refer back to the master section where the, the, the city has determined what the fine is in municipal court. I think that's the reason for the difference in language. And the reason it's in the caption the way it is, is because when you have a, an ordinance that imposes a penalty, the local government code requires that either the ordinance in full or a caption that summarizes the ordinance and includes what the penalty is needs to be published in the official newspaper. So that, that's why the, the caption has the $500 amount in it.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, it appears that the drafted proposal has just been talked about by our city attorneys. It has due process. It has a process. It appears rational. I think we need to act on this. And with that, I'm going to get it started. I'm going to move that we adopt ordinance number 2020-09-08 as written.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. May, and Mr. Gregory with the second, and Mr. Rappley.
It's 2020-09-23, just to make sure it's today's date.
Oh.
Okay.
There's still a minute.
I guess I have a question because that's not what we've been given. So I feel like I'm confused on what we're going to vote on here.
What was handed out?
This, the most recent one that was handed out despite the fact it has the wrong ordinance number on it.
Yeah, I guess, okay, Mr. Fletcher, the date didn't get changed, but.
Okay.
I didn't edit the date, just the content. But the signature date should show September 23rd at the bottom.
Okay, let, let me do it for.
Yeah. I, I think if everyone just marks out in the ca- in the title where it says ordinance 2020-09-08, you just change that to 23, and that will be the, the ordinance that's being adopted. But I appreciate Mr. Isbrand calling that to our, all of our attention.
Mr. Mayor, are you okay with that revision?
It is. I just wanted to restate it. It'll be simple. I moved that we adopt ordinance number 2020-09-23 as written and handed out on the diocese.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory, with the second still. That being said, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Okay, digressing back to item number seven. Discussion of possible action on chapter 34 of the City of Castle Hills Code of Ordinances related to signage, signs and advertising. I'd like to say we're going to go into an executive session pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with an attorney on September 23rd, 2020 at 8:03 PM. And we'll be back.